The school board study session for June 4, 2024 is now in order. First item on the agenda is 2024-2025 MOU between CMCEA and CMCS. First read, Dr. Luna.
Yes, I'd like to have Chief Human Resource Officer Melissa Isit discuss the first agenda item.
This is the 12th year that we have successfully implemented a memorandum of understanding through the collaborative conferencing process. The collaborative conferencing team is made up of seven CMCSS representatives and seven CMCEA representatives. The team met four times during the 2324 school year from February to May. We appreciate the time and commitment of each team member and look forward to a continued partnership. The actual MOU document will be placed on the CMCSS website with hyperlinks referencing all policies and procedures that are part of the understanding. The following policies were revised as part of the 2425 MOU. HUM A040, extra duty. This policy was revised to include the clarification that administrators will assign non-instructional staff to non-instructional supervision of students when feasible. It was also added that when instructional staff are assigned extra duties, they will be acknowledged through non-fiscal incentives and recognition that will be determined at each school level. Pay A003, salary deductions of labor union dues. This was removed per new state legislation. The teacher's salary schedule was updated with a pending 5% COLA in steps pending budget approval. The starting salary for bachelors will be $48,346 and the starting salary for masters For extracurricular supplements, we added high school TSA and removed high school DECA. This concludes the updates and changes for the 2425 MOU.
Are there any questions? Second item on the agenda is 2023-2024 end of year review. Dr. Luna.
Board members, in your packet, you have a comprehensive review of each of the goals for the 2324 strategic work for the district. Each goal provides a mid-year progress summary, end-of-year report, as well as next steps. Some of the highlights from this year include an increase in the industry certifications earned by our high school students from 868 two years ago to 1,750 this year. There's also been a growth in employee satisfaction, as evidenced on the upbeat survey, improved teacher retention numbers, increased staff development hours earned by our classified staff, opening of a new high school with construction wrapping up for a new elementary in the fall, comprehensive rezoning to address school capacities, securing of land for our future Freedom Elementary, plans for a new early learning center to help promote our early literacy, and increased parent and community engagement with the addition of Parent Square. The entire end-of-year review will be posted on the CMCSS website to share with our community.
Thank you, Dr. Luna. Item four is goal number 11, continue support to schools on promoting consistent, meaningful parent engagement opportunities across the district. Goal number 12, engage future parents and community partners to promote the importance of literacy before kindergarten policy reference EL to Dr. Luna.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think we did skip our federal budget amendments with Chris Renau.
I'm sorry.
He is still here one last day.
Still here?
He is. This is it.
I thought you were gone. Okay, I'm sorry for that. FY 2024 federal budget amendment, Chris Renau.
Thank you, Dr. Better.
He always likes a special introduction. That's good.
So again, this is the last budget amendments for this fiscal year. Not a lot of changes. We did reallocate some funds in CTE and in SIR 3.0. We did receive some additional revenue through consolidated admin, Title I, Title II. So you see those offset expenses. And then there was a reduction in our Title IV by 11,000. And then so we offset those expenses as well to net zero.
Told you I'd be quick. What? Okay, I was waiting for, I was thinking I could be for an hour. And now go, go, item four, Dr. Luna.
I would like to welcome the communications team, Chief Communication Officer Anthony Johnson, along with Director of Communications Jessica Goldberg and our Director of Continuous Improvement Elizabeth Vincent to present goals 11 and 12.
Good evening, Board, and we gladly trade places with Chris for his short presentation. But we'll make it pretty brief, but we are excited tonight to present to you about two goals. So this is not often that we combine two, but they're both very much interrelated. And so we're going to be talking tonight about family engagement, our continued work with that, and then a new goal that we're excited to talk to you about tonight, and we'll be launching a marketing campaign here soon in promoting early literacy. So when it comes to family engagement, we want to just acknowledge, because we have presented on this nearly every year, we want to just kind of remind about some of our past initiatives when it comes to family engagement. So you might remember from 2014 to 2019, we had a grant, if you remember Esperanza McCrery, who led that grant, and it was in a consortium with Fort Campbell and Christian County Schools. And we were able to do a lot of great things that we still have in place today. So for example, our parent advisory council, a lot of our volunteer training, as well as some of our family resources. So that, that work is, is still continuing. Our CMCSS learning centers, which are going on close to two decades of operation, have been a big piece of our family engagement process. You'll see here some of the past strategic work goals, just as a reminder, I won't go through all of them, but just to mention, you know, in 2018, 2019, a lot of our focus was on refining our online resources, and that's when we redeveloped the website to make it easier for families to find information. And then down to last year, you might remember, we talked about our family engagement pilot, and we had 10 schools that took part in that pilot, and we had a lot of great work there. And then our Tennessee Department of Education Family Friendly Schools audits, we did two of, two rounds of those last year. This year, we gave kind of a buy year to allow schools to implement some of the suggestions we made last year, but we'll continue those audits again next year. So every time we talk about parent and family engagement, we always want to acknowledge the barriers. And so one of the biggest things for our community, and you're all very aware of this, is we're a very diverse community. We have rural schools, we have schools that are suburban, we have schools that are urban. There is not a one-size-fits-all approach to family engagement, and that's what we always emphasize to our school leaders, is that you have to find what works best for the families at your schools. For families, work and other time commitments are a huge barrier. We're a blue collar community, we're a military community, a lot of homes, it might be single family, somebody working, two parents working. So there's not a lot of time, you know? I think there's this perception that everybody can just stop what they're doing and come to school every day, but that's, that's not the case. So how can we make it easier for them with the time constraints? We also acknowledge and understand that many parents maybe don't understand, you know, how can they be involved? What's the best way? And then of course, language in a diverse community with 1,500 students who are EL and lots of different languages spoken at home, understanding, you know, those language barriers and how do we combat that? And then on our part, we have to ensure that we have a welcoming environment for every single parent and guardian at all, what will be soon, 47 of our schools. So those are things that we always keep in mind, and we want to remind when we talk about barriers. So I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth to talk about some data and why we approached the strategic work we did this year, and then it'll lead us into some of our talk about Parent Square.
Good evening, Board members. Glad to be able to share some of this information with you and tell you the story really of these strategic work goals and how things have progressed over the last few years, most recently with the implementation of Parent Square and some of the things that we've been doing to continue enhancing parent and family engagement. So I want to start by going back in time a little bit. These are data that you have seen before. We, we've discussed as we've presented on this strategic work goal for the last several years that one of the major turning points for us as a team, when we saw these Fall 2020 parent survey results, that really kind of kicked us in gear on some previous parent engagement efforts. So on the left on this slide, you'll see a, a triangle. That graphic represents research that, that discusses how often parents should hear from different aspects of their public school system in terms of frequency. At the top of that, you see district. We, according to research, a school district should be communicating with families pretty much once a month. You make it like a family newsletter or something of that nature, giving families a sense of what's going on. Obviously, we may communicate more with things like weather or, you know, unusual events, but typically you see about monthly engagement with parents and families. Next, you have the school, and what we want to see there is that the school is engaging with families on a weekly basis. Family newsletters, again, some similar things like that, as things come up, it may happen more often, but in general, there should be a weekly touch point for families hearing from their school. And then down at the bottom, with the greatest frequency, we want to ensure that teachers are communicating with families on a daily or near daily basis. That can fluctuate depending on the age level that we're looking at, you know, a high school student's family members, they may not hear from their teachers on a daily basis like you would an elementary student. We want to continue to enhance the independence that high school students have on handling their own communication and, and handling their own assignments and responsibilities. However, in general, we want to see that frequency of communication increase, the closer and closer that we get to the student level and to the family level. So all of that to say, when we got our parent survey results in Fall 2020, we saw a discrepancy that we didn't want to see. 92% of families agreed that the district keeps them well informed, which is a wonderful point of celebration. However, only 89% of families agree that their child's school kept them well informed. Now, three percentage points ultimately is not a huge difference in terms of numbers. However, if schools are supposed to be communicating with families more frequently, we want to ensure that families feel that same level of information coming to them from the district as they're getting from the school. Another thing that we saw in the survey results from this year was a gap in, in performance across schools. There was quite a bit of variation at the school level in terms of how well-informed families felt. There was a 22 percentage point gap in levels of agreement across the schools from our school with the highest level of agreement that families felt well informed compared with schools that were at the lower end of that. So these were some of the real starting points, and, and we've continued to track these things over the course of the last several years, and I'll highlight for you what our most recent figures look like based on the work that we've been doing in this school year. So you can see here the trend for all of the different parent surveys that we've administered. This is specifically the data for the question, "The school district as a whole keeps me well informed." You can see, we started, as we indicated, with 92% agreement with that statement. We did see some decreases the next couple of years after that. Our team has attributed that to the fact that as we emerged from the pandemic in those last couple of years, we weren't communicating with families as much as a district. In that peak COVID era, we were communicating with families excessively on a weekly basis, updating with health protocols, with changes in CDC guidelines and things of that nature. And so as that communication decreased and we moved to a more normal state of things, we did see some decreases to that. However, it, from Fall '22 to Spring '23, when we started administering our survey in the fall and the spring, we saw a, a good jump to 93% agreement that, that parents feel that the school district as a whole keeps them well informed. And that's generally where we've stayed for the last little bit, you know? We're, we're okay with consistency in terms of the agreement with the school district keeping families well informed. Of course, we'd like to continue to see that to climb ideally to 100%. That's always the goal that we keep in mind, but we're glad to see that that has continued to stay consistent over the last several years. One important point I want to make about these surveys is for Fall '23 and Spring '24, we actually had our highest participa, participation rate ever among parents and guardians in our parent and family survey with nearly a 50% response rate in terms of how much of our student population and families were represented. So to see that level of consistency that families feel the school district as a whole communicates well with them, even with that much of an increase in our participation, was really encouraging for our team. The real celebration here that I want to highlight are in the next few slides. So as we indicated, the discrepancy was the thing that we really wanted to address with these strategic work goals. Do families feel like they're hearing from their school, they're hearing from their child's teachers? When we look at agreement with the question, "My child's school keeps me well informed", that increase has been steady and has continued to go up. You can see, we went from 89% in Fall 2020 to 93% in Spring '24. Again, keeping in mind that from the spring of 2023 to the fall, we had a huge jump in participation on the survey. So seeing that increase again is a really telling sign that those things that we've been doing for the strategic work goal have been felt, and we are seeing that increased school-level communication from families as a result of things like the parent engagement pilot last year and this year with just continuing to provide those supports and implementing Parent Square. I want to highlight some of the areas related to that variation that I discussed with you, so the differences in performance across schools and the differences in those levels of agreement. What you have here are the top five schools on our parent survey in terms of parents agreeing that the school communicates well with them, and then the bottom five, just so you can see some of that difference across all of our schools. These are the results from Fall 2020, again, that 22 percentage point gap that we saw that we wanted to begin to close with our bottom school at 77% agreement and our top school at 99% agreement. As of the most recent administration of our parent survey, we've closed that gap by nearly 10 percentage points. So we still see relatively the same level of agreement at the top end with 98% of families in that specific school indicating that they feel the school communicates well with them. And our lowest this year was at 86%. So we've made tremendous gains in terms of schools being more consistent in terms of families feeling that their school keeps them well informed. One of the most important data points that we tracked for strategic work this year relates to the increase in daily communication. So I hope you can kind of see the story that we have worked through as we've been implementing family engagement strategic work every year. We really focused on the school level with our parent and family pilot program that we did, and with the implementation of Parent Square, we wanted to ensure that we were seeing that teacher-level communication increase. So we asked a question on our parent survey, starting in Fall of 2022, "How often do you hear from a child's teacher? Is it daily, weekly, a few times per month, or is it less than monthly?" Just to get a sense of how often we were seeing families indicate they received that communication. And you can see, the, the red line and the blue line are really the ones that I'm going to hone in on for you all. When we started asking that question, we had 22% of families indicate they received daily communication. That decreased to about 18% in Spring of '23. Meanwhile, families indicating they were hearing from a teacher less than monthly was at about 21% in Spring of 2023. We set a, a goal that we would increase the families agreeing that they hear from a teacher on a daily basis and that we would decrease families that were hearing from them less than monthly. We wanted to ensure that we were seeing those things reverse. And with the implementation of Parent Square as part of that, that's, that's one piece that we attribute this success to, we did begin to see a tremendous increase in the daily communication that families are receiving and that teachers indicate Parent Square makes easier to do. It's not something that's happening at the, at the burden of teachers, it's something that allows teachers to be able to engage in that daily communication more easily. So we saw that increase to 31% daily agreement, and then we saw people indicating that they heard from a teacher less than monthly drop from 20% down to 10%, or 21%, I should say, down to 10%. So after implementing Parent Square, we saw these results improve drastically. All great points, and, and my colleagues will talk about more great results that we saw from these strategic work goals, but all encouraging data points that we've seen.
So we did a big presentation last year on Parent Square, you'll remember, over the summer, and we talked about why we're moving forward with this platform. And so today, I'm pleased to present some of the data from our first year of use with Parent Square. Of course, the data that Elizabeth talked about is tremendous, a lot of significant growth. But you know, the reason why we went with a new vendor is, you know, School Messenger was great to get a snow message out, but it did not have the capability for us to meet that triangle that we started to introduce a few years ago. We didn't have a platform for teachers, and so that's why we moved towards Parent Square, the two-way, real-time translations, so many things while we move forward. So with Parent Square, as of the, we pulled this data about a week ago, we're able to be in contact with 99.9% of families who are contactable through, out the school year. With School Messenger, this was around 85%. And so we have a significant increase, and for some of those families that we have had some challenges getting with them, it fluctuates, and what we're able to do is pinpoint who those families are, have schools reach out and get that contact information updated. And so when we're talking about 99.9%, when we ended the year, it was around 40, 40 families that we were still having some challenges, whether it was carrier settings or whatnot. So anyway, that's a great number there. Parent Square has a analytic where they basically take all of the families that we have, and they look at how often they're opening messages, how much they're clicking, how much time they're spending, and according to their data, 92% of our families are interacting, which that's a good thing. So they're not just getting it, they're actually interacting with the information that's being provided. We've sent over 2.5 million auto notices, over 1.4 million direct messages, which again, the great thing about direct messages, and I get so much positive feedback from our EL families and our EL teachers, is that it's two-way translation. So if I send something in English and somebody has their setting set to Spanish, it will translate automatically, and vice versa, they send the response in Spanish, it will translate automatically to English. It has really reduced that barrier tremendously. We've had tons of volunteers requested to the platform, items requested, 58,000, over that with posts, lots of photos, and 10,000 smart alerts, and I want to give a shout out to our transportation team. 99% of those smart alerts have been from our transportation team who manually, every morning, every afternoon, send an auto notice or a smart alert to families letting them know a bus is late or a bus is changing. So they've done, they've embraced it and done a tremendous job. This just gives you just a little snapshot of the deliver, deliverability history, so you can kind of see that first piece over here that shows, you know, where, where we were around 80% able to contact families. The, really the headline here is, as you can see, that purple, and that's the app. As we have continued to emphasize how great the app is, you'll see that we have nearly 50% of our families who have downloaded the app. The other important statistic about that is even though it's only about 50% of a parent or guardian with the app, it's actually 89% of our families. So maybe mom has the app, dad doesn't, or vice versa, that sort of thing, but 89% of families, somebody in there has an app. And then this bottom piece here, that really speaks to what Elizabeth just spoke about, and that is, you know, we're going to see probably a little bit more from our elementary families than we are high school because of, again, you know, the responsibility that, that a lot of high school students are expected to have. But this just shows you that, that frequency matches exactly what Elizabeth was talking about. So that's Parent Square. Any questions about the first part before we move into early literacy? All right, so we're excited to talk about our next initiative, which is early literacy. Where did this come from? It came from the data. And so when you look at, this is the bottom here, the Tennessee ELA achievement rate, this is the state average. Of course, we don't have data from last year that's ready yet, but from the, the previous year. So 38.1% of Tennessean students across the state were mastering ELA standards. Our rate was higher here in Clarksville, Montgomery County, 44%, but still, again, we're shooting for 100 every time. When you look at the research, in order to improve early literacy, it has to start before they ever come to school. And so that's what our goal is, is to help empower, educate, and provide the resources for families from birth to five in understanding how important it is for those families to build that vocabulary, to provide literacy at home. So let's talk, just like we do with engagement, it's important to talk about, there's barriers. We have to acknowledge and understand the barriers. Socioeconomics, a lot of families don't have the money. If you have to choose between buying books, resources, or food, I can tell you what I would choose for my family. And so we have to understand that we have to be able to point in the direction or provide resources for those families that are at no cost to them. Again, time, that's always going to be a barrier. Language is always going to be a barrier. Parent and guardian knowledge, and not just, you know, I think a lot of our parents and guardians understand reading is important and, and know how to read with their children, but teaching children to read is hard. I was an educator, I just redid, did the training two years ago from, from my licensure, and going through it, it's overwhelming when you look at all of those pieces. And I know I'm looking over here at two former educators, it's, it's hard. And so helping parents to break that down, how do you teach a child to read? Knowledge of interventions and resources, a lot of families don't know that if your child's not performing on level, what does that look like? And that at the age of three, you can come over to CMCSS, we can help you out in getting you those early interventions, and just awareness of the importance. Again, all of the research indicates that birth to five is crucial, and that's before they come to school. And so have, making sure families know how important it is to, to be involved. So just a few, just highlight a few of these initiatives, you're going to hear a lot more about this over the coming year and years, but the first one, and this is just a huge thank you to the board, the St. Bethlehem Early Learning Center, we will even realize for many years to come how important this is going to be for our community. Having this center that a lot of larger urban school districts have, where we can really concentrate our resources and support, is going to be huge. So we're really excited about that. That's our first initiative, a lot of time and energy is being invested in that. And Mary Beth Mathis, who's been selected as the principal there, she is a key player on our steering committee for early literacy, and so we're really excited about that. Something that you'll be hearing more about in the future, there's still some mechanics we've got to work out, but a community book bus. And so we have a bus, and we've got a community, and so how do we get books out into the community? A community book bus. So we're working on some partnerships with Montgomery County government. Nothing solidified just yet, but we have some really good conversations that are ongoing. We have continued to beef up the, the, the parent training and resources at our CMCSS Learning Center, specifically around ELA, and that will continue. We're also looking at St. Bethlehem Early Learning Center becoming kind of an extension of our learning centers and being a hub for early literacy there, continuing to strengthen our community partnerships. I, I love the library here, but I have probably talked to them more in the past few months than I ever have, and realizing some of these missed opportunities we've had in the past really partner with them. And so, and that's just one, I mean, from the Imagination Library, all of these organizations, how can we all come together to support this? Something that Jessica will talk about here in a little bit is providing an early literacy hub. When we talk about those barriers, again, you know, cost, time, parents just don't have a lot of time to look all around the world for all of these resources, and if they don't have the money, they won't be able to fund them. So how can we get free resources directly that have been vetted by our educators into the hands of teachers? So we have developed a hub that we'll be launching this summer, and then Jessica will talk more about our big campaign, Tiny Readers, Big Futures. So I think here is where I'll turn it over to you, Jessica.
Good evening, Board. I am so excited to share our early literacy campaign tonight. After receiving all of the data and information that Anthony and Elizabeth shared, the communications team went in and started brainstorming, and I do like to joke that sometimes we take all of that data and all of that information that they give, and then we say, "How do we make this fun? How do we make this digestible and something that everyone's going to be able to understand?" And so what we put together here was really something that had the goal of creating a campaign that reminded parents that they were their child's first teacher and their biggest advocate, and we wanted them to know and encourage them that they needed to feel confident and capable of taking on these roles. And so the campaign that we put together is Tiny Readers, Big Futures. It's hard to not see these tiny little faces and smile, you know? They're, they're young, they have their whole entire life ahead of them, and we acknowledge that they're sweet and adorable, but really their learning knows no bounds at this point. And so kind of embracing a habit of reading early on, they just have such big futures ahead of them. And the tagline that we will use with the campaign that you can see on some of the marking, marketing materials is, "This is where their story begins." You know, today, every parent, every caregiver can take that first step of really changing their child's future. So what we put together, you can kind of see different pieces on the screen, is a campaign that's going to have a mix of organic and paid advertising. We think a multi-platform approach, a multi-tiered approach is really the best way to reach parents and caregivers, and we know that really sometimes our birth-to-five parents are not our parents who are coming into schools. So we know we need to go out into the community to reach them as well. They might not have children in the schools yet. So we have amazing community partners in Clarksville, Montgomery County, and we're going to be working with our Pi partners, our local organizations, our local businesses, our local media partners, and really putting something together that reaches everyone through print, radio, outdoor, social, online, video, you name it, we're going to try it. Because we know that's where our parents are, and that's where they're consuming information. And the campaign will run at different times throughout the year. And while posters and flyers are great, and they're going to look fabulous, we know that really we need to house the information somewhere. And so the bulk of our work will really be in the resources that are provided on our early literacy hub. So you can visit the early literacy hub through our district website, cmcss.net/reeds. And any of my marketing people in here know we do have two short links, it's reads and read, because you will have people leave the S off, so you can get there through both URLs. And so on that hub, families can access the local, state, and national resources that they need to help them feel successful. As Anthony mentioned, you know, sometimes parents don't know what they don't know, they don't know all the resources that are out there and that are available. And our instruction and curriculum team is amazing at finding, you know, free book giveaways or free decodables and free tools that you can use at any age, birth to five, to really engage with your, with your children, as well as finding intervention measures as well. So we'll have all of that on there, and then we know and understand that And then we know and understand that reading might also be an anxious space for parents. They may, they may have some anxiety around reading themselves. And so we want to make sure that those resources are presented in a way that helps them feel comfortable understanding. Um, and so finally also on the hub, you'll see, um, different videos that are positioned in different places that talk about different tools and resources. But the very first one that you see is a welcome video from our St. Bethlehem Early Learning Center principal, Mary Beth Mathis. And, um, there's really no better person to provide a warm welcome to parents as they begin their journey. So I'll let it play.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Mathis, principal at the St. Bethlehem Early Learning Center, part of the Clarksville Montgomery County School System. We are so excited to share with you an early literacy resource hub that will give parents and caretakers the tips and tools needed to give children birth through five years a solid foundation. These resources will support young children in succeeding in school and reaching their potential. We know that reading to children is important and starting early is critical. Beginning early is important because the roots of language are developing in a baby's brain before they can talk. The more words a baby hears over time, the more they learn. As parents and caregivers, you are the first teacher and most important advocate for your child. Ignite the spark and develop the love of reading and learning. It is never too early to start. Read with your child and give them a foundation upon which they can continue to grow and learn throughout their life.
And as I mentioned, just welcoming videos, helping parents remember that we have the tools and resources they need and really at any space, any place, they can find something that they can engage with their children. So I'll turn it over to Anthony to talk about community engagement.
And Jessica and her team, Courtney and Megan, amazing job as always, uh, putting this together. You all are seeing the sneak preview. Uh, we're going to be launching this later this summer. We're in the talks with some partners in education. Um, so we're not, we won't pay for the advertising, but in some kind of like combined, uh, marketing with those, uh, so we're really excited about that, but you got to see a sneak peek. So you're going to hear a lot more about this and, and hopefully you can help us share with the community as well. I just, even though it's not combined with these goals, uh, I just wanted to make sure I gave just a quick update again about the CMC Education Foundation, which is really that leads our community relations efforts. Another, and, and their financials aren't completely finished yet, uh, they don't close out until the end of June, but another, um, record year, uh, of giving for the foundation. And, uh, just a reminder to you all, you all are very involved. Board members, uh, attend a lot of the events at the, the foundation overseas, but just a reminder, some of the great work that they're doing, specifically want to highlight partners in education. We have some partners in education in this room, um, over two-hundred-and-fifty active partners in education doing amazing things in our schools. So in addition to engaging our families, our, our parents and guardians, um, and caregivers, we also want to engage the broader community. So we'll close with just talking very briefly about our next steps. So we're going to continue to promote and sustain our early literacy initiatives, um, improving the utilization of parent square. We had a really successful first launch. In fact, we're being highlighted by the company for our launch. Um, but we still have areas to grow. Again, we shoot for a hundred, so we're going to continue to improve and provide those training resources. Uh, we're going to be refining our family feedback opportunities. Elizabeth has a lot of ideas about how to improve, uh, that. Again, great, highest number we've ever had on a parent survey, over fifty percent. But how do we really get to every single family to, to hear their feedback on how we can improve? Uh, we'll be partnering with instruction and curriculum department, um, to drive academic support by improving our family-friendly instructional resources. What we're doing with early literacy, we want to be able to replicate that and do that for just about everything. So how do we break things down? How do you make it easier for families to find the support they need to support their children? Uh, continuing to foster and promote a welcoming environment in our schools and providing targeted supports to schools. So where we see gaps, just like Elizabeth talked about, we helped to close that gap. How do we go in and push in for some schools that, that might need some support and welcoming and creating those welcoming environments? But that is all we have. And so any questions?
Mr. Mr. Mayberry?
Yeah, I just want to get feedback. I, I appreciate this, uh, as a parent who uses parent square, it's been a great tool. Um, and I appreciate all the work that's been done in this, this, um, portion. Any engagement and increasing feedback between parents is incredible and yeah, good job.
Thank you. And, and I just, I'll note too, I appreciate that feedback. We do get a lot of positive feedback from parents and, and just, uh, before I walked into this meeting a couple of hours ago, uh, Ms. Harris, an elementary level director said that at the end of year reviews they had with all the principals, all the principals talked about how great it's been. So we just appreciate everybody embracing the platform and, uh, we'll just continue to try to succeed. Thank you all.
We'd like to thank you for that real great, uh, presentation. At this time, county commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns? Okay. Uh, it's board. I know everybody's trying to leave. I would just like to say, I, I really did appreciate that presentation because it's always no, good to know that the parents are being included in what we do as a district. You know, I got a chance to watch over twenty-five-hundred kids graduate this year. And you know, that is the highlight of my time has been on the school board is to be able to shake those students' hands as they walk across the stage. But you know, I noticed something else this year. I also I noticed how the principals and the students interact. You know, those kids, they love their principals and the principals love those kids. And I got to see that in a special way as they began to leave out, you know, they being hug each other, they get high five and they do all kinds of things to show that there is communications between, uh, our leaders in the schools, not just, not necessarily just up here, but at the school as well. And I say that because we had so many people talk about how the kids are being treated. I don't think that those kids would actually, uh, put on a show on the last day of school just to appease us sitting up on their rostam. I believe it was sincere and I really do believe that how those principals react and acted with those kids and how those kids respond to those principals was something very important, uh, to education. And Dr. Luna, job well done and staff, job well done. And if there's any teachers out there, I say, job well done. Dr. Luna, it's on you.
Good evening, board members. This week, teachers have been gathering at Kirkwood High School for the kickoff of summer professional development known as Engage. Educators from across the county select sessions aligned with content interests and areas to strengthen. These sessions allow team members to earn their required eighteen hours of in-service while learning in an engaging atmosphere for colleagues. We will have another session in July. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June fifth, summer learning camps and extended school year are scheduled to begin. So if you see buses out and about, we are back in session. Summer school has already begun for middle school and high school. We have approximately thirty-five-hundred students who have, are scheduled to attend twenty-one different locations across the district. These numbers do not include all of our academy camps and our boys and girls camps that are also being offered at full capacity this summer. A huge thank you to faculty and staff members who have prepared and will be teaching daily to ensure that our students have every opportunity to reach their full potential. It is so important to keep our children engaged and learning throughout the summer. Finally, I would like to acknowledge that tonight's meeting is the final official obligation for Chris Renaud as CMCSS employee. Chris, thank you for serving our CMCSS family. We wish you nothing but the best in future endeavors and we will miss you. Mr. Garland, this concludes my report for the evening.
It's less than an hour.